So for those that are new, this is a first of three meetings that we're going to have this weekend to talk about the Book of Ephesians. We're not, there's so much in this book and we're definitely, we don't plan to finish and cover everything in three meetings, but at least it'll get us started. And you know, so first meeting will be tonight, the next meeting will be tomorrow afternoon at four, and then we'll have the third meeting Saturday night at seven thirty. And we wanted to get into this book because there's, there's so much in this actually. And the important thing is that we really come with a hungry and seeking heart. You know, there's, we're, we, the Bible is not for us to analyze and to study. You know, I was just talking to my boss yesterday and he was talking about, he asked me what I'm doing this weekend. I said, oh, we're going to spend time in the Book of Ephesians. And then he talked about, because he's a Christian, he talked about studying the Bible in some study guide he's using. And I told him, and he was talking about understanding the Greek and the Hebrew, and I said, you know, there are a lot of things that we know already and we don't even do it. You know, understanding all the little intricacies, how is that going to help us? There are so many things that are very simple that we can't even do, yet many times we pursue so much knowledge, deep knowledge, that we're not even ready for. You know, so, but the main thing is that, that God appears to us in the Word, that we can really see what He wants. And it really should matter to all of us Christians, what God wants. It's, a lot of the emphasis these days is on what God can give to me, how He can bless me and how He can solve my problems and, and everything. But we were created for God. He was not created for us, we were created for Him. We're just the, the creation, we're just a creature. But He's God, but yet we many times expect Him to be our servant. So I think when we go into the Book of Ephesians, you can really start to see that God has a great plan, actually. And the reason why He wrote it to the Ephesians, the Christians that were in Ephesus, is that they were ready for it. You know, when, when you look at 1 Corinthians, for example, they had so many problems. They had infighting and divisions and, and contentions and all these things and sin going on. So He couldn't get into a lot of this, He had to address their problems. But the Ephesians, it's, it was different. You know, they were further along, there was, they were more mature. So He could get into some of the more deeper things. And I hope that this weekend, what we talk about is not too deep for anybody. Some of the things that Paul talks about in the beginning, they are a little bit abstract because it deals with things in the spiritual realm. It deals with things from God's perspective. And there are things that you can't see or touch, right? Like if you, if I talk about, you know, don't lie, don't cheat and, and you know, do good and all that, that's something that everybody can understand. But now we're talking about something that is more spiritual and more in the heavenly realm. But it's important for us to understand. And there are some things that we will not understand because it's just, it's beyond our human thinking. But let's look, let's read this chapter together, alright? Or actually, let me read it and you follow along. And I hope that everybody has a Bible to follow along with. Yeah, you know, when we, when we go through the Bible, it's important that everybody brings their Bible and follows along, yeah, carefully, okay? Because there are very important things in here. Okay, I will read. "Paul, an apostle of Jesus Christ, by the will of God, to the saints who are in Ephesus and faithful in Christ Jesus. Grace to you and peace from God our Father and the Lord Jesus Christ. Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ, just as He chose us in Him before the foundation of the world, that we should be holy and without blame before Him in love. Having predestined us to adoption as sons by Jesus Christ to Himself, according to the good pleasure of His will, to the praise of the glory of His grace, by which He made us accepted in the beloved. In Him we have redemption through His blood, the forgiveness of sins according to the riches of His grace, which He made to abound toward us in all wisdom and prudence. Having made known to us the mystery of His will, according to His good pleasure, which He purposed in Himself, that in the dispensation of the fullness of the times, He might gather together in one, all things in Christ, both which are in heaven and which are on earth in Him. In Him also we have obtained an inheritance, being predestined according to the purpose of Him, who works all things according to the counsel of His will, that we who first trusted in Christ should be to the praise of His glory. In Him you also trusted, after you heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation, in whom also having believed, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise, who is the guarantee of our inheritance, until the redemption of the purchased possession to the praise of His glory. Therefore, I also, after I heard of your love, your faith in the Lord Jesus and your love for all the saints, do not cease to give thanks for you, making mention of you in my prayers, that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give to you the spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of Him, the eyes of your understanding being enlightened, that you may know what is the hope of His calling, what are the riches of the glory of His inheritance in the saints, and what is the exceeding greatness of His power toward us who believe, according to the working of His mighty power, which He worked in Christ when He raised Him from the dead and seated Him at His right hand in the heavenly places, far above all principality and power and might and dominion and every name that is named, not only in this age, but also in that which is to come. And He put all things under His feet and gave Him to behead over all things to the church, which is His body, the fullness of Him who fills all in all." Amen. I think one of the, you know, what, what he starts off with in this book is really quite amazing. Like we said before, He sends His greetings, He calls them, you can see in verse one, that He's writing this letter to the saints who are in Ephesus. And I like how He addresses these Christians, He calls them saints. And what does this word saint mean? I looked it up, the original meaning of this word, it means to be the holy ones, right? These are the holy ones of God, the ones who are separated and sanctified to God. They've been set apart for God, they belong to Him. So to be a saint, it is something very special. It's not something that's appointed by the Pope. You know, today, if, you know, you know somebody as Saint, Saint Calvin or something, right? The Pope, you must have performed two miracles and then the, the Pope will appoint you and something, something, right? And then you're officially called a saint. But that's, that's not biblical at all. But here you can see, He refers to all the Christians in Ephesus as saints because these are the called out, the, the people who are called to be separated to God. And isn't that what we are? We believers, you're not just somebody whose sins were forgiven and you have eternal life and that's it, but you have a very special position. You are now someone who belongs to God. You're consecrated to Him, you're holy to Him. You're somebody that He paid with His own life to purchase. So now you are His property, you belong to Him. So this word saint is very meaningful, and that's why we love to call each other saints. But even when we call each other that, we shouldn't just, it's not just a title, right? It actually means something. It should remind us all that we have been separated to God, right? It's a very, not a small thing to be called a saint, okay? And, and then He goes to, He, He greets them in verse three, He said, "Blessed be the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, who has blessed us with every spiritual blessing in the heavenly places in Christ." Yeah, this is really wonderful, that every, every good thing that we need, every spiritual blessing has already been given to us. You know, somehow people want, that when they think of blessing, they think of money, right? Maybe if I see Ronnie has a big house and a lots of money, big, big wallet, I'll say he's very blessed, right? He's a very blessed man. But me, maybe I'm, I don't have much, I'm not blessed, right? Isn't that what people think? But then I would ask them to look at Jesus, well, Jesus didn't have much, he didn't even have a place to live. So that means Jesus wasn't blessed? Is that what, what people think? It's a very strange idea, right? But Jesus definitely was blessed, all the apostles, they experienced the blessings of the Lord, the richness and the, you know, Paul saw so much of the riches of Christ, the spiritual riches. He even counted all of his earthly successes as nothing, as garbage. So he didn't need all that. But for us, we're just chasing after what we think are blessings. But here it says, everything has already been given to you. All these spiritual blessings have been given to you in Christ already. But the problem is, we don't like to remain in Christ. We want to live our own life. We don't want to continue walking with Christ. We don't want to be in fellowship with Him all the time, right? And then we wonder, why are we, why do we feel like we're so far from God? Where are these spiritual blessings? Well, are you walking in Christ every day? Are you in constant fellowship with Him? So this is something, he's not making this up. It's, he's writing this because he actually tasted this and is living it. That's why he can talk about it, otherwise where else did he come up with this idea? No, nobody, there was no Paul before Paul. He didn't read Ephesians to tell him that he was blessed with every spiritual blessing. It came through his real experience. And it says, verse four, "Just as He chose us," God chose us in Christ before the foundation of the world, that we should, what? Be holy and without blame before Him in love. It doesn't say chose us to be, have our sins forgiven, to have a good life, you know, to go to heaven. That's not what it says. But it says here that we were chosen even before the earth was created. His, it means this is His original intention. The original plan was for humanity to be holy, to be blameless, to be perfect, just as He is perfect. And sometimes we think, well, you know, I'm, yeah, I, I have faults, I keep sinning and I have all these things and that's just the way I am. But it says here that He chose us to be this way, to be holy and without blame. So does that mean it's impossible for us to be changed to this? If this is God's plan for humanity from the beginning, does that mean it's impossible? And the Word also says that, in 1 Peter, I think, it says that God will finish what He started, that we are to be conformed to the image of Christ. Let's read that in Romans, chapter eight. Romans, chapter eight. I really like, like this verse a lot. Everybody likes twenty-eight, that all things work together, right? We, we love to, which is true, you know, when things go, appear to go wrong, we like the comfort that this verse gives, that everything works together. "For good to those who love God, who are called according to His purpose." But verse twenty-nine, we often miss. It says here, "Whom He foreknew, He also predestined to be conformed to the image of His Son." So just like it, we read in chapter one of Ephesians, we were already predestined, we were already chosen before the foundation of the world. Here it says that we were chosen to be predestined. God's plan for us is to be conformed, to be like Christ. And the more you see what Christ is like, the more you have to realize, I want to be like Him, right? I want to be Him, like Him in His love, in His compassion, in His holiness, in His, you know, faithfulness, all these characteristics and His strength and His power and so much of Him I want to have in my life. How there is no sin in Him, no darkness at all. And that life is now living in us and it is capable of changing us to, to make this happen, to make us conform to His image. This is God's plan. It's not, the plan of God is not just for you, it's not for you to go in heaven one day, play harp. It is for us to be conformed to the image of His Son. And we'll talk about that a little bit in a moment, okay? So verse five, again, it tells, oh yeah, continuing in verse twenty-nine, it says, "That He, Jesus Christ, might be the firstborn among many brethren." Did you realize that? That Jesus is not meant to be, we all know who Jesus is, right? If you ask, if I ask you, what, what do we call Jesus? Who is He? The Son of, Son of God, right? Everybody knows He's the Son of God, the only begotten Son of God, right? Everybody knows that. But did you know that He is not supposed to be the only Son? It's not meant to be that way. Because it says here that He might be the firstborn among many brethren. And who are the many brethren? It's supposed to be us. And so if Christ is so perfect and glorious and holy, and do you think it would make sense, what kind of family would it be if the firstborn was like this, but then all the other, the ones born after were also corrupted and sinful? It's not meant to be like that. That's why it says here that He wants us to be, all to be made like the firstborn Son. And just like in Ephesians, Paul mentioned it again, that we were all called to be holy and without blame. So in verse five, back to chapter one, verse five, it says, "We were predestined," okay? It means that God planned a long, long time ago, that was His plan, our destiny, this is our destiny, okay? "To be adopted as sons by Jesus Christ to Himself." So we were meant to become sons of God, yeah. We're supposed to be His sons, and that's what we are today, you know? God is not just God far away, but God is our Father. And Jesus even said, "Don't call anybody else your father, God is your Father." You know, His, look at Jesus' relationship with God. If you read the Gospels, you see how close He is to Him. He's always spending time with Him. And when He was on the cross, bearing the sins of the whole world, God had to depart from Him and He, it was so hard for Him to handle that, to take that. He said, "My God, my God, why have you forsaken me?" It was so painful for Him, for God to depart from Him for that moment. But God had no choice, He, He had all the sin of the world on Him. But that's how close His relationship with the Father is. And He said, "I am in the Father and the Father is in me." They're so close, they're one. "I and my Father are one," He says. And that's not only for Him to enjoy, that is also for us. Do you see? This is God's plan for us, that we are also, just as Christ is, that we are also one with the Father, that He is also in us and we are in Him. And we're perfectly in one with Him. That's the plan, okay? So that's all in the first five verses so far, okay? "Being adopted as sons by Jesus Christ to Himself," okay? "According to the good pleasure of His will." That's, that little phrase is so amazing. That means it, it is something that makes Him really happy, that is something that He really wants. It's a pleasure to Him that we would be sons of God also. He doesn't look at us as these terrible people, I'm just going to, they're so disappointing and so bad and all that. But He, it's even such a pleasure for Him because He knows that He will succeed in perfecting us. He knows His plan will work out. So He is so happy that we can also become sons of God, you know? Sometimes when we look at, with, with some people, we may say, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk to that person, you know? I, I, I like, maybe I like this person, but I don't like that person, you know? Because they, they fit what I like, but that other person, he's too different and I don't really like that person. But here, can you imagine how different we are from God? You know? Sometimes like, oh, maybe we meet somebody, oh, Ronnie likes, I don't know what, rap music. I like, I don't think so, but maybe I like classical music. Ah, we don't get along because we like different things. Or Ronnie likes soccer, I like baseball, oh, we don't really get along. But can you imagine how far apart we are, how different we are from the living and holy God? Yet He wants us to be His sons. You, you, sometimes you have to stop and think about how amazing that is. Not only does He want it, but He's glad, He's so happy, it's, He has this good pleasure to, to have that, right? "And to the praise of the glory of His grace," in verse six, "by which He made us accepted in the beloved." He made it possible, right? It's, in other words, it's not something that we did. We were so good and, you know, we were nice people and we did a lot of good things and then God accepted us. But it was by Him, He made it possible, He did it. And so how can you, that's why it says, "to the praise of His glory, of His grace." Because He can only, when you think about it, you can only praise God because there's no other way, right? It's all by God. Yeah, let's see here. And then, "In Him," verse seven, "in Him we have the redemption through His blood, the forgiveness of sins according to the riches of His grace." Yeah, so you see this, verse seven, many people just stop at this. They just know that we have the redemption, we were purchased by the blood of Christ. Jesus died on the cross for my sins, which is true, but they don't think about why. And even if they think about why, they don't fully appreciate the, the full why, you know? And it's all because God wants this, these many sons who are perfected. He wants all of these children of His to be holy and perfect, just as He is. You see, it's not just so that we don't go to hell, but it's because of what God wants. And remember what I said, we, many times we don't have that perspective of thinking what God is trying to accomplish. What is His grand plan? We just think, okay, I got saved from my sins, I have salvation, I have eternal life. But it's much, much more than that. God is trying to accomplish something. He wants a nation of people that are holy, that are perfect and glorious, like He is, okay? So that's why He did this, He redeemed us through His blood. And He forgave our sins, according to the riches of His grace. This grace that He gave us is so rich, you know? For a holy God to forgive our sins and to be patiently working with us and help training us and disciplining us and putting up with us to slowly mold us and change us to be like Christ, it takes a lot of grace. It really takes a lot, you know? And that's why, and Paul experienced that, that's why he said, "It's rich." You know, He called Himself the chief of all sinners. You know why He called Himself the chief of sinners? Why do you think? What did He do? What was the sin? He killed Christians, right? I don't know how much worse you can be, you know, to kill God's people. He dragged them off to jail, He persecuted them, went house to house, checking if there are any Christians there and if there were, He would drag them off and send them to jail and to get killed. And for Him to experience forgiveness and change in His life, that's why He said that was rich, very rich. And then not just that, but afterwards, what He saw, how God worked in people and in the church, so He could only say, "It's rich, very rich." "And which He made to abound toward us in all wisdom and prudence." Right, it's not just a little bit that He gave, but He poured it out. It says to abound, but another word for abound, I think in another translation, is, it's very abundant, right? It was poured out to, abound means something that was poured out freely, like it was so much, so overflowing. "Toward us in all wisdom and prudence." Okay, and there's something I wanted to add here. So Christ, there was, talking about, one thing I, I was reading and I was really quite amazed is that He did all this. And there's many places where He mentions in Him or in Christ, you know? Because it was all done through Christ. It was everything, Christ accomplished everything that God wanted. He fully satisfied God. And you know, when it says that, that God wants to, um, actually here, let's continue on, I'll show you, when, when we get to here, it'll make sense. In verse, verse ten, okay, verse nine, "He wants to make known to us the mystery of His will," right? God wants us to know what's, what His plan is, "according to His good pleasure which He purposed in Himself." Okay, so the mystery of His will, His will is not just, who am I going to marry? What school will I go to or whatever? His will is a, His grand plan, His plan for the whole universe. "That in the dispensation of the fullness of the times, He might gather together in one, all things in Christ, both which are in heaven and which are on earth in Him." This is a very important thing, this is a very important point about His will. It tells us something that God is trying to do. You know, last Sunday, we mentioned this a little bit, that the whole creation, when Adam and Eve sinned, sin entered into God's creation, okay? Everything got contaminated. And I was saying that it's like poison got injected into everything. Not just man, sin became part of our nature, so that it's just natural for us to sin. But sin, it was not just sin into man, but sin entered into all creation. The trees, the plants. The trees, the plants, the birds, everything. All creation, everything became corrupted with sin. And so God's plan is to renew and recover all of creation. And the way that he does it, his plan is to do that in Christ. So when Christ came, he not, it was not only to reconcile us back to God, but it's also to reconcile the entire creation. Because it says here, okay, it says here, that he might gather together in one, all things in Christ. All things is not just man, but the entire creation will be renewed through him. Okay? Both which are in heaven and which are on earth. The things that we can see on earth and the things that we cannot see in the spiritual realm. The things above and the things below. Every single thing will be renewed through Christ. And he wants to make Christ the center of the entire universe. This is something that's a little bit hard for us to picture. Because our understanding of, of who Christ is, is so limited. We still think of him as a poor servant who was born in a manger two thousand years ago and then he rose from the dead. And we don't have any concept of who he really is spiritually. And I'll give you a picture of that. Because Paul, actually, he wrote about it, but even when you read this, it's still hard to picture it. Okay? It says here in, uh, yeah, Colossians, chapter one, verse 15. It says, he is, he, that's Christ, is the image of the invisible God. So basically, he is, you cannot see God. Right? If anybody says, show me God, you can't see God. But he is the image. It's like he is like God, um, in a tangible form. And he is also the perfect merging or union of God with man together. Right? He is, on one side, he is God, but on another side, he is man. He is fully man, but he is also fully God. And so he's the perfect union between the two. That's why, because he is this perfect union, he is able to bridge the gap between God and man. Because he's the union of the two. So that's why he is the one that could accomplish God's will. Because he is this, he is God and man at the same time. Right? And he is also, because he is a man, he is a part of this creation. And so that's why it says here, he is the firstborn over all creation. So he's the beginning of all creation. Okay? That's why Jesus said, I am the alpha. That's what it means, that he is the start of everything. He's the start of all of God's creation. I'm sorry if this is a little bit abstract, but this is what it, he's talking about. Right? That your understanding of Christ, our understanding of Christ has to be much more than how limited it is. That God wants to make him the center of the entire universe. Okay? And because he is this, this union of God and man, that we are able to, God is now able to understand what it's like to live as a man. And for man to be able to have an understanding of God. Right? That's what I mean about him bridging the gap. But here it says, he is the firstborn over all creation. He's the image of the invisible God. Verse 16, for by him all things were created. Wait, I didn't see Jesus at the creation. I thought Jesus was born on December 25th in a manger. Which is wrong, by the way. But here it says, even at the creation, all things were created that are in heaven, that are on earth, visible and invisible. They were all created by him. Yeah, Jesus was there. He was there. And he was, he was the creating, he was the one doing the creating work. So he definitely was existed before, before the, before the manger, right? He definitely existed before that, okay? Everything in heaven and on earth, visible and invisible. That tells you that the universe is not just visible things. There are invisible things. There is a spiritual world that you cannot see. And God, and that was also created. Thrones or dominions, principalities or powers, all things were created through him and for him. Meaning it was all created by him and to serve him. It was for his purpose, for his pleasure, for his interests. So that's why he also is called the omega, because everything is for him and ends with him. All creation, the whole universe, visible and invisible. So Jesus is not just someone who lived thirty-three and a half years and died on the cross for, for my sins and that's it. And every time I want to have a problem, I pray to Jesus. He has much more than that. Right? Everything was created through him and for him. And God wants to reconcile the whole creation to Christ. And verse 17, and he is before all things, and in him all things consist. This means that the whole universe, you know, people have a phrase, they say money makes the world go round, right? Money kinda keeps the world running? Well, that's nonsense. Because here it says, in him, in Christ, all things consist. That means the whole universe is kept running and operating through Christ, by Christ. He's the glue that keep, holds everything together. He's the power that keeps everything running. It's, I, I can't believe how Paul could see this. This is really like something else. You know, how did he realize this? You know? So this is not a, a small thing. That this Christ that we believe in is so much bigger and greater than we can ever understand. I don't understand what it means that he keeps the whole universe running and glued together and I don't know what that means. And why he wants everything, Christ to be centered in everything. And it says here, where is this one? Also in Colossians, chapter one. Christ is all? He says here, Christ is all in all. In Colossians also. Where's that verse? Verse 11? No, no. Yeah, no, there is something here. No, it says Christ is all. There's one verse where it says Christ is all. But anyways, it's, it's not one ver- Hmm?
3:11.
Ah, okay, thank you, thank you. Colossians 3:11? Yeah, quite, thank you, yes, praise the Lord. Everybody can contribute, right? Yes, that's what I'm looking for. But Christ is all and in all. Yeah, it's really amazing how Paul could realize this. That Christ is all and in all. And everything is for him. He's the beginning, he's the end. He's the start of all creation. Uh, Ephesians says he's the firstborn over all creation. Everything is reconciled and gathered up together in Christ. Yeah. And this, and it's not just Christ alone. God wants us to be a part of it. That's why in verse 11, chapter one, Ephesians, verse 11, we'll continue on. He says, in him we have also obtained an inheritance. Being predestined according to the purpose of him who works all things according to the counsel of his will. Yeah, this inheritance is mentioned. And, um, verse continuing on, um, that he who first trusts, that we, we who first trusted in Christ should be to the praise of his glory. In him you also trusted, after you heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation in whom also having believed, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise. Amen. They, they trusted when they heard the word, they trusted, which is the gospel of their salvation. And then they got, they were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise. The Holy Spirit is something, is also God. And he comes into us, he lives in us. And the, what is the Holy Spirit for? He has many purposes, right? He is there to, Jesus said in John 14 that he is, he is the teacher, he's the helper. He will help you remember the things that I spoke to you. In John, chapter, first John 2, it says, he's the anointing that will teach you all things. You know, in 2 Timothy, chapter one, it says that he is the, he is, he will give you the, right? He is not the spirit of fear, but of power and love and a sound mind. He produces, Galatians 5, it says that he produces the fruit of the spirit, love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness and self-control. They're all produced in us by the Holy Spirit. And on top of all that, it's a seal. It's a, what does this seal mean? It's a, it's a down payment. It's like a foretaste of what you are going to get. You know? It's like, I, I give you a, a deposit first. I, I, just to show you that this inheritance that you're going to get one day, it's for sure you're going to get it. Just to prove it to you, I'm going to give you the Holy Spirit. Which is quite an amazing gift, right? I'm gonna give this to you just to show you, to prove to you that one day you will receive it. Right? That's an amazing, uh, down payment, right? It's, sometimes if we give a down payment, it's like, uh, ten dollars, fifteen dollars. But he gave us the Holy Spirit. That's quite amazing, right? And we're sealed. It means no one can take it away. So anybody that says you can lose your salvation, that is false, absolutely false. Because this is a seal and it's a promise. God does not break his promises. If he gave you the Holy Spirit, it is a promise. You can't lose it. It's, you know, otherwise it's not a promise, not a very good promise. And verse 14, again, he shows how sure it is. It is the, he is the guarantee of our inheritance until the redemption of the purchased possession. Meaning until, until the, all the people that are, that are going to be saved will be saved. Right? Everything is completed, right? Meaning the closing of the age. So, you know, this inheritance, I wish we had more time to talk about it, but the inheritance, I'll just go through some points here. Matthew, chapter 5, we know, right? Verse 5, it says that blessed are the poor in spirit, was it? That they will, uh, yeah, poor in spirit for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Right? So we can inherit the kingdom, the whole kingdom of heaven. And it says blessed are the meek, verse 5, for they shall inherit the earth. So God also wants to give the whole earth to us? You know, that's quite a lot. The kingdom of heaven and earth, that's our inheritance. Psalm, chapter eight. That's a very famous psalm. It says here, verse, he's talking about man. I don't have time to go through the whole thing. But verse six, it says, you have made him, that's man, to have dominion over the works of your hands. You have put all things under his feet, all sheep, oxen, beasts of the field, the birds of the air, the fish of the sea that pass through the paths of the sea. All things, the whole creation will be our inheritance. And then Matthew 19:29, our inheritance is also eternal life, the eternal life of God. 19:29. Okay, everyone who has left houses or brothers or sisters or fathers or mothers or wife or children or lands, for my name's sake, shall receive a hundredfold and inherit eternal life. Yeah, he wants to give that to us too, of course, but there is a price. We talked about inheriting the kingdom. Daniel, chapter 7. The prophecy talks about the kingdom being given to the saints. 1 Peter, chapter 1, verse 4, it says, there's an inheritance incorruptible, undefiled, reserved in heaven for you. Right? It's reserved. Colossians 3 talks about a reward that's waiting for us. So many things. You know, God wants to give so much to us. Yeah, really. And we're so, we're working so hard just to, you know, for our little things, you know? And we, we want this, we want that. We want to win the lottery. We want, uh, you know, so many things. But here, God wants to give us everything. Put all of creation under our feet. Psalm 8. And he promised it by giving us the Holy Spirit. Which we can already foretaste today. You know, so how, how can we not want this? The only reason why we don't care about this, no wonder it's such an insult to God that you don't, that we don't want it. Hebrews, chapter 12, it says, Esau, because he rejected the inheritance, he lost it and he couldn't get it back because he gave it up. So why was God so offended about it, by that? Because that story was us, was a metaphor for us, that God wants to give everything to us. But we tell him, I'm not interested. I'd much rather make an extra thousand dollars or something, right? This money that will pass away be burned up one day. I'd rather do this with that and whatever, you know, these temporary things. It's no wonder God is very offended by that. Yeah. So, you know, this is, um, really, really have to, the Lord has to open our eyes. That's why he says here, I'm just gonna go quickly through this. Therefore, back to Ephesians, chapter 1. So Paul says, therefore, I also, after I heard of your faith in the Lord Jesus and your love for all the saints, do not cease to give thanks for you, making mention of you in my prayers. So what does Paul do? What's his response? Is that he gives thanks, he gives thanks to the Lord. He is praising the Lord. He is praying for them. You think only people who are in trouble need prayer? No, even these people who are, they have faith in the Lord, they have love for the saints, but yet Paul's still praying for them. He still prays for them. He mentions them. He thanks the Lord for them. That the God of our, and what does he pray? He prays that the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory. Right? The, God is not just God, but it's the Father of glory. He really saw something. I've never seen that name used to refer to God. I mean, Father of glory, but yeah, he definitely saw something. May give to you the spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him. Not just wisdom and revelation of scripture, of Bible knowledge, but in the knowledge of him. You know? You cannot know God through analyzing the Bible. You know, you cannot know God that way. Yeah, the Bible talks about him, but you still need to come to him. That's why Jesus said, you analyze, he told the Pharisee, you analyze the scriptures, but you don't want to come to me. So here it says, he wants, he prays for them, that they may increase in the, they have the spirit of wisdom and revelation. Wisdom to, to discern and also revelation to understand. Right? Reveal, revelation means reveal. You know, if I, if I, if something is hidden like this and then I take it away, that's called, I've revealed it. Right? That's revelation. Revelation comes from that word. I've un, unhidden it, I've revealed it. And that's what Paul is praying, that they would see more of who God is. It's in the knowledge of him. Knowledge of him isn't head knowledge, it's through experience. It's through encounter and interaction with God. Right? And then in the riches, okay? The eyes of your understanding being enlightened, that you may know what is the hope of his calling. You know, his calling is filled with hope, it's very hopeful. There is something ahead of us, you have something to look forward to. And the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints. So all of us have a bit of this, the riches of the, of the inheritance, which is the spirit of God himself in all, each one. And he prays that we can see this richness in one another. Right, so when we see each other, look for the riches. Help to nurture the riches in one another. Right? Don't just see the people's problems. You know, ah, Ronnie's got this problem and Jasper's got that problem and Jennifer's this and that. Look at the riches, right? What is rich? The riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints. So if I isolate myself, I don't interact with brothers and sisters in Christ, how is this going to work? I never see anybody, I can never see this, these riches in others. And what is the exceeding greatness of his power toward us who believe? Yeah, I really want to experience this, the exceeding riches of his power, greatness of his power. It's exceedingly great, not just great, but exceedingly great toward us who believe, according to the working of his mighty power. So how can we be defeated, Christians? You know, I'm just the way I am. That's how I am, I can't change, I can't do this, I can't do that, I'm too weak, I'm too fragile. I've had a, I hear, I heard this excuse too. I had a rotten childhood, that's why I am the way I am. Well, you think this exceeding power can't help you overcome that? There are so many excuses that people give. I don't have enough money, I don't have enough time, I don't have this. You know, that's why I can't have enough time for God, that's why I can't pursue him. There's no excuse, because he has exceeding power. But the problem is, we don't believe. It's only for those who believe, it says. We don't believe. We believe Jesus died, but we don't believe in the exceeding power, which was able to raise him from the dead and seated him at his right hand in the heavenly places. This means that he's on the throne, that means he has authority. If someone has no authority, even if they have power, they won't be able to do anything. But now that he has authority and power, he has the, he can make things happen. You know, if I'm just a junior person in my company, even though I have great ideas, but I can't get anything done, because I'm just a, you know, entry level. But imagine if I was the CEO and I have the, those great ideas and I have, I have the authority, I can say, okay, let's do this. It'll get done, because I have the authority. Right, so this is very important, that he mentions both, the power that raised him from the dead and the authority, because he's on the throne, he's the king, he can make things happen. So how can we have any excuse? How is there any excuse that we can't? And not only is he seated at the right hand, but he's even far above all principality and power. You, above every power in this world, he's above it. Even in all the power in the invisible world, he's above it. Right, above every might and dominion, every name that is named, not only in this age, but also in that which is to come, including the next age, which those powers that haven't even come around yet, they're not even existing yet, but he's already higher than them. Right, so it's really amazing what a Christ we have. Yeah, it's really wonderful. And he put all things under his feet and gave him to be head over all things to the church. He wants the church to be part of this. The church is his body, the fullness of him who fills an all in all. So the church is not a, it's not a place for us to have Sunday services. But the church is this people of God, this holy people that were called out, that were given this power, given, that has Christ on their side, you know, and has this big duty to represent the kingdom and the power and the glory of God on this earth. And to contain the fullness of God. You know, it's, and somehow people reduce the church just to Sunday service and some charitable deeds and human organization and they, they make it revolve around a, a man, you know? It's, this is Calvin's church, that's O.C.'s church and, you know, then, then you do your thing, I do my thing and the, the, the view that people have of the church is so tiny and it's made it so insignificant. But they don't realize that it's supposed to be the fullness of Christ. And we just talked about how full and rich and powerful Christ is. And that's supposed to be contained in the church. And we have to, we have the responsibility to use it and to magnify it and to express it and manifest it in this world. And to show people that how powerful it is in our life. Right? That's what the church is for. And, um, I, I just wanna show you one slide before I end this, um, meeting tonight, um, before I end my part. Sorry, it's, there's a lot in chapter one, I don't know how we're, I don't know how we're gonna do all this, but, um, and I had to rush through it. Let me just show you this, um, this chart. It's a, it's a chart that's actually on our wall, I don't know if you noticed, but it's there. Okay. It's, it's this one, yeah. And I just wanted to show you something, because when we talk about the church and this, oh yeah, yeah, I'll share, I'll share. Oh yeah, I am sharing, I am sharing. Yeah, so when we talk about the church, you have to realize that the church is just part of this, this stage here. So God, God's plan has been, over time, he has been revealing more and more of his plan and carrying it out in more, in greater and greater ways. Okay, so this, at the start of this chart, I'll use my, my pointer here. Okay, this is, this tells us that there were things that happened before the creation, uh, before Adam and Eve came, right? There was, you can read about it in Isaiah and Ezekiel, um, that the angels were ruling, were, were ruling creation. And then Lucifer was the top angel, he rebelled and he was cast down. So, so if you wonder, well, where did Satan come from? When you read about the Garden of Eden, well, that's where he came from. So that tells us that there were a lot of things taking place. There was a world before Adam and Eve came about. There was a world also even before, um, the creation, the so-called creation that you see in Genesis, chapter one. Something was there before that, okay? And then Adam and Eve were created, they fell, there was a flood, the Tower of Babel. And people were kind of just ruling themselves, it was just a chaotic time. You know, people were just doing whatever they wanted. And then the, and the evil just became worse and worse. And then the flood came, God came to destroy the creation and judge it because of their sin and eight people were saved, Noah and his family, through the flood. Um, but eventually they, the civilization grew and they built the Tower of Babel. And then things got confused again. But then Abraham called, was called by God at this point. And from there was the beginning of God's earthly kingdom. Okay, this, this chart is called the dispensations of the kingdom of God. That means the, the different manifestations of the kingdom. And the manifestations of the kingdom of God are on an, it's getting more, greater and greater, more and more glorious. Okay, so it started off with the nation of Israel. It was all, it was all physical, there was not a spiritual nation, it was earthly. Right, these are people that were, uh, they had to, they had earthly, physical laws to follow. They were governed by physical laws. And they had a physical, eventually they had a physical king and everything they, God's kingdom, meaning God's nation, the people of God, were earthly. It wasn't spiritual. But then, but then when Christ came, the kingdom of God became, it went up a step. It became a more glorious, it became a spiritual kingdom. It's no longer an earthly kingdom, but now it's a spiritual kingdom. It's even better and it doesn't, it's not only the Jews, but it includes all the Gentiles too. It's all the non-Jews, anybody can now be part of the kingdom of heaven. That's what it's called, the spiritual kingdom. It's a heavenly kingdom, meaning it's not of the earth. Right, it's, kingdom of heaven doesn't mean it's in heaven, it means it's not of the earth. The origin of it is heavenly, because the life that we have as God's kingdom people, the citizens of the kingdom, came from God. It's a heavenly life that's in us. So the church is this kingdom of the heavens. It's a, it's a spiritual heavenly kingdom. So the churches, like I said, it's not just, um, it's not a Sunday service, it's not a human organization, but it represents the heavenly kingdom of God. Okay, but then eventually, when Christ returns, it's going to go up another step and be even more glorious, because he's going to reign on the earth. He himself will reign in a visible way on earth with the, with those who are matured and ready. And then after that thousand years, it'll go up to its ultimate step, where it was meant to be as the new Jerusalem, the new heaven and new earth. So you can see, it takes these, it starts down here, kind of messy. And then it gets better, then it gets better, then it gets even better. And then here it ends up, it, it, finally it manifests itself as what God intended, the new heaven and new earth, the new Jerusalem. Right, so the church is the current, the, the manifestation of the kingdom of God in the current age. But it will be ending soon. So we need to think in terms of the kingdom of God as a whole. Right, so Ephesians talks about the, about, uh, it talks a bit about the grand plan of God, but also talks, we'll get into how we as the church in this age, the kingdom of God, should operate and, you know, do certain things and why things are the way they are, right? We'll get into that, the brothers will share about that. But here, it's important that God's plan is much more than just the church. Because the church is only this age, there is much, much more beyond that. Right, but because we live in this age, the, the building and the preparation of the church is very important, because it'll prepare us for this one, the next stage. Does that make sense? Okay, all right, I think that's, that's a lot today. Praise the Lord.